Hey, Shalom, Shalom, Mosiah Christ Blessed, y'all. Mosiah Christ Blessed. Uh, we out here in I U Y C Macon. We come out here to give real solutions to real problems.
Hey, ain't no brothers, sisters, tell you that one. Hey, um, I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate you brothers speaking in your heart. You men and women, you sitting here, you listening. The fact that you're here, you know, some of y'all see us in the street. We have been teaching our people that there's a better way. So, what you said, what you said specifically, everybody spoke the truth. But what you said specifically about us governing ourselves. Us governing ourselves, we have to understand that we are the most important people on this planet. If he wasn't, they wouldn't have hit it for me. If you wasn't the most important people, they wouldn't have told you or changed who you are.
Yeah, we just concluded a town hall meeting where we discussed the violence, the gun violence, the most important solution that came out with the Bible. And with that, we say Shalom. We're the officers out here in I U Y C Orlando, coming out here, showing our people an example. We come out here normally to teach our people the scriptures, but we also want to apply Judah eight twenty-four, being an example unto the communities, showing them that we can come together in these last days and clean up ourselves as well as our communities. Alright? Shalom, Mosiah Christ Blessed.
Shalom, brothers, shalom, sisters. Bishop Mathaniel here. You know what day it is? That's right. It is Shout Out Tuesday. It's Shout Out Tuesday. And you know how I love to read your letters of exhortation and your donations of support. But before I do that, I often love to cover a little bit of our hidden history. That's right, our hidden history. So get your libations, get your diet food, get your comfort food. Get whatever you need to relax yourself to enjoy today's lesson. Alright, so sit back, relax. Let's take a look at our hidden history, shall we? Holman Illustrated Bible Dictionary. Let's take a look inside. Alright, let's, we just looked up black. Often used to denote the color of physical objects, hair, Leviticus thirteen thirty-one verse thirty-seven, Song of Solomon five eleven. Notice what it says next, skin. That's right. Skin, Job thirty verse thirty, Song of Solomon, chapter one, verse five and six, Lamentations four verse eight. I want y'all to see that the scholars know that skin color is mentioned in the Bible. So anytime you hear Christians say, color's not in the Bible, black color especially, tell them to shut the hell up. They don't know what they're talking about. They support, these Christians that say such evil things support white supremacy. Listen good to what I'm saying. They support white supremacy. And, and I want us to go down here. Black is also used figuratively to describe mourning. Job thirty twenty-eight, Jeremiah four twenty-eight, Jeremiah eight twenty-one, Jeremiah fourteen two. You know Jeremiah fourteen two says Judah mourneth, the gates thereof languish, they are black unto the ground. That black, notice the term figuratively. It means two things. Yes, it means mourning, but also means skin, meaning dark skin. How do I know that? I want you to take the lightest skinned black person you know, I just said it. The lightest skinned black person you know, and ask yourself a question. Do they call them white, black, or other? They call them black. But they're very high yellow. They're light skinned. They're called black. Why? Is it because their skin is as black as night? It's because our condition as a race, black is also used figuratively to describe mourning. Our race is in mourning. We're called the black race. So don't ever let nobody tell you that, that the word black is only talking about mourning. No, it's also talking about skin and mourning. Two in one, because black is also used figuratively. Alright, now, man, Roger's International Thesaurus. This is the third edition. Alright, let's go down. This is eighteen thirty-four, White Eyes Only, like Deacon Nathan says. Why white eyes only? Because in eighteen thirty-four, where were we? Slavery. These white people had us in hard bondage, captivity, slavery. Eighteen thirty-four. So let's go inside this book and see what they say about black. Right there. Seven, Negro colored person, black, blackamore, Jim Crow slang, darky, Sambo, ebony. The image of God. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do y'all see that? Do y'all see, eh, come on. Do y'all see that? The image of God. What's the image of God? Negro. Do y'all see that? Number seven, Negro colored person, black, blackamore, Jim Crow slang, darky, Sambo, ebony. The image of God. Early Spanish manuscript illumination. This is the book cover. Now let's go inside the book to discuss this picture here. Alright, we're going to plate eight A. Notice what it says. I highlighted it. Christ whose darkened flesh tones now give him an almost Negroid cast. Y'all see that? Let me zoom in on that. That part right there, almost Negroid cast, meaning they're trying to say he might look black, but he's not black. And a lot of Christians go with this word. See, it says almost. But listen, we ain't stupid. Let these Christians die in the lake of fire with their slave master. This what, this, this is the image they're discussing. That's Christ in the center. There the cherubims on the side and the angels around him. So many times they like to say and lie and say, oh, there was a fire and that's why the skin tones got burned up. So the skin tone got burned up, but not the yellow wings, not the yellow sleeves, not the green halos and not the background. That is, the fire just jumped boom, boom, boom in their hands, right, in their feet. The fire just jumped on there. I tell you, Christians are evil, evil. Thank the Lord, he woke us out of that spell. Christ almost looks Negro. He is Negro. He's black. Look at that. That look like a black man to me. With black hands and black feet. Here's plate nine A, nine B. The Philist- Goliath's challenge. The Philistines stood on a mountain on the one side and Israel stood on a mountain on the other side. Let's look at the Philistines and let's look at Israel. Okay, this guy's really big here. So by looking at this, I can tell this is supposed to be Goliath. Black, brown skin. These are the Philistines. Black, brown skin. And these are the Israelites. Black, brown skin. Let's zoom in on the Israelites. Do y'all see that? Do y'all see that? Black, brown skin. Here's Revelation twelve and one, the great dragon with seven heads. Let me count. One, two, three, four, five, six, oh, seven's down there. Seven heads and ten horns, and a woman clothed with the sun and a moon under her feet, and twelve stars around her head. One, two, wait, let me start here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve stars which represent the twelve tribes of Israel. Look at the woman. That's a black woman. The great red dragon is after her. Let's go across to the angels. Look at the Lord on the throne, black. Do y'all see that? Do y'all see that? Look at the angels. Now something happens when the color changes. These people are thrown into the lake of fire. They're radically, radically more lighter than the angels. With a demon down here in the lake of fire, heads. I wonder who. So again, there's God on the throne with the angels. He's giving instructions, black. There's no if, ands, or buts, and these are old. These are painted in nine hundreds, okay, in Spain. Alright, this book is called Our Living Bible. Alright, let's go inside. I'm on page two fifty-four. Do y'all see this here? Painting from Dureropas, third century A.D. So this is about two hundred A.D. This is the first known painting of Christ. Healing the man, telling him to pick up his bed and walk. I want y'all to look at how they painted Christ in the year two hundreds, in the two hundred, black. Ain't no if, ands, or buts about it. He's a black man pointing at this man, this other black man, to get out of his bed. And the man picks up his bed and walks. And made their lives bitter with hard service and mortar and brick. Here's a picture, a painting of the Israelites in captivity in Egypt. Painting from the tomb of Rechmael, fifteenth century B.C. before Christ. Everybody's black. The Israelites doing the hard labor are black. Here's one of Joseph. So Joseph found favor in his sight and attended him, and he made him overseer of his house. The blessing of the Lord was upon all that he had in house and field, Genesis thirty-nine, four to five. There's Joseph overseeing the workers in Egypt. Remember, Israel didn't come in yet. His brothers had not come in yet. Everybody's black. That's what I want y'all to see. A History of the Jews From the Babylonian Exile to the Present by Solomon Grazo. Okay, the Jewish Publication Society of America. I'm gonna go inside this book and I'm gonna show you Martin Luther, who is a Calvinist, or some call him the father of the apologetics. And what I'm going to show you is that these apologetics, these Calvinists, are evil race of Caucasians. They're evil. Okay, I'm on page four twenty-six. It says Martin Luther and the Jews. In defense of the Jews, Europe in the meantime had witnessed the rise of a rebellion within the Roman Catholic Church. So now remember, there was a Protestant movement against the Catholic Church. Let's see if the Protestant movement changed the Roman Catholic Church's movement. Let's read on. We're here at Martin. Martin Luther, an Augustin monk and an ordained priest, has started out to preach reform and found an unexpectedly large following among the people and the nobility of Germany. Before long, his movement broke completely with the traditions and organization of Catholicism. He became a Protestant, okay, in apologetics. One of Luther's charges against the church and its methods was its harsh treatment of the Jews, talking about the black Jews, aw. He used very strong language to describe the attacks and the persecutions by which priests and monks sought to obtain the conversion of the Jews to Christianity, talking about the Inquisition. The proper way, he argued, was the way suggested by the best among ancient fathers of the church, the way of kindness and consideration. I wanna pause there. A lot of these Christian apologists, they come the way of kindness and consideration. They love you in the name of Jesus. They just love, 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 love you. But let's read on. What the Jews thought. The Jews, to the Jews, these words of the leader of the new movement came as a great relief. They were overjoyed that at last a famous Christian teacher spoke of them as human beings. They did not stop to consider Luther's real aim, which was their conversion to Christianity, as he understood it. They could grasp only the facts of his speaking and writing against the expulsions, I'm on page four twenty-seven, expulsions and oppressions to which they had been subjected. A few enthusiasts among the Jews of Germany went so far in their misunderstanding of Luther that they actually congratulated him on the steps. He was taken to come closer to Judaism. The majority of the Jews looked merely for a lightening of their burdens. Luther's disappointment, here it comes now. Luther had thought that he could win the Jews with a few kind words. When this did not happen, he was bitterly disappointed. He now attributed everything to the stubbornness of the Jews and to what he chose to call the falsehoods contained in Jewish literature. He outdid, look, 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 he outdid the Catholic clergy in the vile terms which he heaped on the Jews and Judaism. And advised, let's zoom in on this. Wait, 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 and advised what? And advised their complete extermination. Do y'all see that? And advised their complete extermination. That's your Martin Luther. That's your head of the apologists movement. That's your church forefather, a demon, an Edomite demon. Alright, we are on page one fifty-two. The results of Paul's teachings. It is not what happened to Paul personally that is important, but rather what happened to Paul's teachings. Even while he lived, ample evidence proves that the people to whom he preached had misunderstood him. Do y'all see that? Had misunderstood him. He had spoken in terms of high and noble idealism of charity, that's brotherhood, of personal righteousness, meaning morality. He urged men to believe in Jesus firmly, and believing in so perfect an example of godly living, begin to lead a godly life themselves. Such righteous people could have no difficulty in reading the awful day of God's judgment. They would surely survive it, and when the day of resurrection came, such people would surely be permitted to live again and forever. But most, here it comes, listen good, but most of the people who listened to Paul remembered only the connection between believing in Jesus and marrying God's mercy and ultimate resurrection. They skipped the middle step, the need to live godly lives, meaning keeping the commandments. These pagan Christians, they skipped the middle step, the need to live godly lives, meaning keeping God's commandments. Thus, faith in Jesus came to be the only and entire basis of the religion adopted by the pagan Christians, while the Judeo Christians who lived in Palestine continued to observe Jewish law. See, the root and foundation of Christianity, brothers and sisters, is paganism. And they always skip the middle step, the need to live godly lives. They don't want that thing. Christianity is a pagan religion, pagan Christians. Alright, Russian icons. This is by Father Vladimir Ivanov. Now I'm gonna go inside the book and show you the Transfiguration. Plate eighteen, the Transfiguration of the Lord. Let's zoom in. There's Christ in the center. Moses on the right with the tablet, Elijah on the left. Black, black men. When you pan down, you got Peter, James, and John sleeping. What color are they? They are black. Alright, now what I wanna do, I wanna go to plate twenty. The holy apostles Peter and Paul were seen from their lives. There's Peter and Paul right there. Black. Look at their skin. And it gets even darker when we go to the side and look at the travels of Paul and Peter, true apostles. I want y'all to see it. Let your kids see how black they are. We have nothing to be ashamed of, nothing to be ashamed of. We were warned to keep the commandments, not break them. We broke them and we went into captivity. We were warned. Look at the black images. I want y'all to see the black paintings. Let's take a look. Peter crucified upside down. And in the book of Acts, you read about Paul going to black nobility. Lot of times we just assume that they were Caucasians, but no, some of them were black, governors and things of that nature. Do y'all see? The beheading. His head was cut off. There's the head. I believe this one was Paul. I could be wrong. Y'all put in a comment board if you remember. So what are we looking at? Peter and Paul. Let me, let me make sure. The holy apostles Peter and Paul were seen from their lives. So don't let your children be fooled. You don't be fooled. Peter and Paul were black. Christ was black. The apostles were all black. Nobody was Caucasian. There was no, no Israelite Caucasian running around. Crucifixion of the Lord, crucifixion of the Lord, plate thirty-six. Plate thirty-six. What color is the Lord? Black. Look at the black angels around him. Look at the white loincloth. Why am I pointing out the white loincloth? Because lying Christians say, oh, there was a fire and that's why the skin is dark. So then why wasn't the loincloth burned? Hmm? Why wasn't the background burned? Huh? You bunch of lying Christians, you. Look at one of the Roman guards, black. There's Mary, the women crying at the cross, black, black women who had sense, who loved the truth, he loved keeping the commandments, who loved the Lord. This is what the Lord is looking for today. What color is, I'm gonna ask again, what color is Christ here on the cross? Black. They don't push this in Sunday school. What color are the angels? Black. They don't show this in Sunday school, these lying pagan Christians. What color is Mary and the other women with her? Black. They don't show this to keep us in the dark, to keep us subservient and docile to them, to white supremacy. That's what they do. This is what they show us, white people painting white images of themselves as the angels nowadays. This is what's going on. This is the evil of what the Bible prophesied about. These Russian and Greek Orthodox, uh, bastards, that's right. What do they do? Change all the dark images and make them Caucasian. This is what you're looking at. There's Christ, black, with a beard in the forefront. You got a Caucasian image he's painting. They paint over all the black images and make them Caucasian. Look at the background. One of the kings of Russia, back in the day, way back, the Israelites. Then they push Caucasian images on us. I ain't making nothing up. I'm showing you evidence. I'm showing you proof. Get mad if you want. Look at this. This is what you got in a pagan Christian church. This is the garbage they push on our children. Look, Jesus loved the little children's. Jesus loved me, this I know, for the Bible tells me so. This is the garbage they push. Then we submit ourselves to white supremacy. Evil, totally evil. Look at this one. Look at Mary in Christ, black. Let me, let me, let me get it, let me get it. Mary in Christ, black. If, if that's the baby Christ, then who in the hell is this adult? See how deceitful they are? Do you see how deceitful they are? Mary, black, black baby Christ, adult Christ is Caucasian. You can't make this crap up. Look at this one. All these Edomites in Russia carrying a tabernacle, having black images. Look at the black faces. Look, you can just see it. Look at the spots of faces, black, brown faces. Waiting for a blessing. Only blessing they're gonna get is a curse from God when Messiah returns, these evil race. You wanna marry them. See, and this is what they push out in the public. See, and this is what they push out in the public. Channel thirteen and all of that. Look, Caucasian images. That's what they do. That's what these people do. So all on the news, you'll get people like this. They'll come with these quasi, these funny-looking paintings, and you're like, what the hell? Look at this one. Well, in this one, you can see they're dark in the back. This is over in Russia, though. But in the foreground, you got a Caucasian Jesus. See that? This is what they do with all the confusion. These are the images they push throughout America, Caucasian images. So your children grow up hating each other, despising one another, your daughters grow up as twerkers and whores, drug users, drug abusers, all because of this. You might not understand it yet, but one day you will, when you have a low self-esteem image of yourself, this is what happens. They know that. Here's the next book, Pictorial History of Israel. Let's go inside. Take a look. Unto thy seed. What do y'all see? You see black Jews, black Israelites, working in ancient Egypt. Let's see where this is from. "This mural depicting Israel's bondage in Egypt was found in the Theban tomb of Rechmir, governor and vizier, at the time of Thutmose III, about fourteen fifty BCE. And the Egyptians made the children of Israel to serve with rigor, and they made their lives bitter with hard bondage, in mortar and in brick and in all manner of service in the field, Exodus chapter one, verse thirteen and fourteen." What color are these Israelites? What color are they? Well, I'm gonna ask you again. Can somebody ask T D Jakes, what color are the real, original Hebrews? What color are the Hebrew Israelites there? This is ancient artifacts, ancient, black. They are painted as black in the tombs. See, this history's been hidden, and T D Jakes, if he knows of it and decides not to teach it, he's the devil, a black, ashy devil the Bible speaks of. And all you in his congregation, y'all gonna be damned to hell and back, every last one of you that follow him. Keep up with these lies. Alright, here's Harper's Bible Dictionary. This is page three thirty-one. "In seven oh one B.C., Assyrian king Sinakhrub conquered most of Judah, including the fortress city of Lachish. The victory was recorded in remarkable detail on base reliefs at his Nineveh palace. This scene is poignant testimony to the plight of his victims, who were deported with only what they could carry on their backs." Uh, what does it say? Let's take a look at Judah. Do y'all see this? This is Sinakhrub guard. Look at the people of Judah. Look, look at their hair. Look at their hair. This is a stone relief. Look at the little boy. These are not Caucasians. These are not Edomites. These are black men with cornrows. Two A, I'm gonna look at page picture one. Picture two A and two B, fresco paintings from the western wall of the third-century A.D. synagogues at Dura Europus, a city on the Euphrates River in Syria. Let's see. Alright, let me see who we're gonna look at. Bear with me a second. At the right, two B depicts Moses three times. From far right to left, Moses strides toward the Red Sea with staff upraised, leading the ancient Israelites out of Egypt. Let's see what Moses and the ancient Israelites looked like. Bam! There's Moses. There's Moses there. Remember, it said it depicts him three times. Moses here, Moses here, and Moses here. Take a look. And the Egyptians are being drowned in the waters. The Egyptians are black. Moses is black. The hand of God is black. That's Aaron. There's Menora. Moses and the twelve tribes of Israel. Moses again. Moses with the staff held over his head, and the Egyptians being drowned in the Red Sea. Do y'all see this? So again, if y'all keep following that lying, teedy, Thomas Dexter Jakes, I can't help you. He jumping around, uh, cooning, talking about he know who he is. He don't know who he is, and neither does his congregation. The Israelites are black. Moses is black. The hand of God is black. Alright, The Jews, A Study of Race and Environment by Maurice Fishburg, published in nineteen, nineteen eleven. Alright, I'm going over to page sixty-four. Watch what it says. Pay close attention. Referring to the converted white Jews. Watch what it says. Must I get into focus? "These fair-haired Jews created a problem for anthropologists. It is a question whence these Indo-Germanic Jews," talking about the white Jews, "as Virchow, as Virchow called them, have found their way into the midst of a dark complexioned race like the Jews." Do y'all see that? A dark, look at that, a dark complexioned race like the Jews. Wow. "These fair-haired Jews created a problem for anthropologists. It is a question whence these Indo-Germanic Jews," talking about these converts, "as Virchow called them, have found their way into the midst of a dark complexioned race like the Jews." Letting you know, the original Jews, the real Jews, are a dark complexioned race. Wow. Here's, I'm on page one fifty. Page one fifty. Watch this. "The Jew Negroes at first spoke a corrupted Portuguese combined with Hebrew and native words." You know what? I wanted this over here. I'm on page one forty-nine. "It is stated that the Philistines are not the only Jews of Negro race. Bastian speaks of Negro Jews living on the Luango coast in western Africa. They are called there Mavambu or Judeos, and these are Bantu." Okay, there's a lot more, those of us that came to America. So I'm showing you that the real Jews are black. Africa being an accurate description of the regions of Egypt, Barbary, Libya, and Bildegird, the land of Negroes, Guinea, Ethiopia, and the Abyssinians. Abyssinia, that's Ethiopia. Alright. This was published in sixteen seventy, sixteen seventy. Africa being an accurate description of the regions of Egypt, Barbary, Libya, and Bildegird, the land of Negroes, Guinea, Ethiopia, and the Abyssinians, that's Ethiopia. Published in sixteen seventy. Sixteen seventy. Let's go in. I'm on page thirty-four. That's the original page, but in this book, it's on thirty-one. Alright, I'm gonna start here. "Many Jews also are scattered over this region, some natives boasting themselves of Abraham's seed." It's talking about Africa. See the title, Africa. "Many Jews also are scattered over this region." What region? Africa. "Some natives boasting themselves of Abraham's seed, inhabiting both, inhabiting both sides, the river Niger or Nigger. Others, uh, others are Asian strangers who fled the, either from the desolation of Jerusalem by Vespasian in seventy A.D. or from Judea, wasted and depopulated by the Romans, Persians, Saracens, that's Muslims, and Christians, or else such as came out of Europe, whence they were banished." So referring to those Jews, those black Jews that were banished, those Jews that were keeping the commandments that were banished. Not all the, all the blacks, but the ones keeping the commandments. Out of some, they were banished where from where? Out of some parts of Italy in the year thirteen forty-two, out of Spain in the year fourteen sixty-two, out of the Low Countries, that's the Netherlands, in thirteen fifty, out of France in fourteen oh three, out of England in fourteen twenty-two. "These all differ in habit and are divided into several tribes, having no dominion, though both wealthy and numerous, but despised of all nations, and so abominated by the Turks that they are not admitted to be Mohammedans unless first baptized. And then, and then no otherwise made use of than to receive their customs and gather in their taxes." Alright. Here's, you see Spain there. Alright, I want you to look at the borders of Africa. There's Arabia. Let me just come in closer. Alright, there's Somalia. This is the horn of Africa. Ethiopia called Abyssinia at this time. I want you to notice where they got the Jews located at. There's the Philistines there. Look over here, Yemen Jews, that's in Arabia. But I wanna focus on Africa. Alright. Tabernacle Jews. A pre-exilic Yahwism, that's for those that followed Yahweh. Alright, let's move over, let's move over. I'm gonna go down to the bottom. Look, Luando Jews, this is on the coast of Africa. Alright, Mavumbu Jews, look, this is what I was just showing you in the other books. Santome Jews, remember, the Israelites was, the Jews were cast out of Spain and sent to Santome or Saint Thomas. That's that island right there. Alright, look, Levite cities. Where amongst the houses? You know, a lot of you Nigerians, you hate the houses. There's Cameroon's. Levite cities over here. This is Nigeria, Nigeria, N-I-G-E-R-I-A, Nigeria. You got Levite cities there. Houses, Levite cities, Levite cities. Beni Ephraim, sons of Ephraim. Beni means, or Benai means, sons of Ephraim. Okay, Dahomey, Dahomey Jews. Jewish traces all amongst the Ashanti. Judeo-paganism. So these Israelites here were following pagan customs around Cape Verde and Senegambia. The Lam Lam, once a Jewish colony, Timbuktu. Let's go around here. Medieval Jewish kingdom. Jewish kingdom of Ganada. Let me go down, let me find some of these words, let me look. Let me go up along the coast. I'm gonna follow the coastline. Benny Musa. Son of, Sons of Moses. Now, it's hard for me to see, y'all know I wear glasses, but if y'all at home, y'all could spot some of this stuff before I do. Berber Jews. Berber Jews. Black Jews. And I want y'all to see this because this is what these so-called scholars put together. The Jews were cast out of Spain. Remember that history? I've been showing y'all for a while. My eyesight ain't that good, but I'm just showing y'all this map. So if y'all see something, y'all could freeze screen it. Freeze the screen! Israel immigrants here, look at that. To Arabia, that's Arabia right there. Jewish traces. What's that say? Wasan Bara. Yemen Jews and Philistines, Berber, Moorish, and Negro Jews. So the white man knows the blacks are the Israelites. They know that. They keep this stuff hidden from us. So, you saw it for yourself, you saw it for yourself. Now today, we're gonna take a look at Tanya Fernandez Anderson. She's from Cape Verde, that's off the coast of Africa. She's an American politician and nonprofit executive, who's a member of the Boston City Council for the seventh district. She's a Democrat elected in twenty twenty-one. Now, we be telling y'all for a while now, we gotta stay out of this political realm and these religious realms, cause it is not for us. Now, uh, Tanya Fernandez Anderson, she got fed up. My sister got fed up. Let's take a look, let's take a listen when she addresses the Boston City Council, shall we?
Counselor Braden, a white woman, has it, that now, that this body, because counselors, for example, all the white counselors here stick together, that they will vote or try to move the districts in a way that is not diverse sufficiently to be able to vote in electives of color. We have fought for a very long time. It is two thousand and twenty-two. We're going back and forth about allegations, but here, people are not innocent until proven guilty. People are guilty first. People are crucified. People are lynched. Same old tricks, same masters, though, and still... And still, people, now everything's changed and everybody, everybody's upset. Everybody is boiling up, people are calling me and telling me, don't say anything, stay in your lane. Be quiet, sit down, you will lose your seat, they won't vote for you. Fight, don't fight, what the fuck do I have to do in this fucking council? In order to get respect as a black woman? And I'm gonna tell you, I am not afraid of losing the votes. I'm not afraid of deceit, I'm not afraid of anybody here. This is the message that I got. This is what I get, I get about three to four of them in my office. I have two sons, I've made mistakes, and once I learned it, I corrected immediately. Because I made a stupid mistake. Because I brought people that were loyal to me, I have, I have six staff, as of yesterday, I have four. That is clear for everyone to understand, when I make a mistake, I will be clear. I don't hate you as a white woman, I don't hate you as a white man. I am sick and tired of this body so stupidly racially divided. So afraid, so depraved. People with no faith. Because they are afraid of, they're losing their advancement. They're afraid of bargaining, they're afraid of leveraging. These people have. Oh my God, I can't even call you cowards because desperation does.
Alright, you saw our sister, you saw our sister. Tanya Fernandez Anderson, alright. So, let's get into the scriptures now, I'm just gonna take us on a slight journey. And we're gonna take a look and see what the Bible has to say, cause a lot of you, believe it or not. A lot of you brothers and a lot of you sisters truly believe that politics is the way. If you don't think religion is the way, your next best option is politics. You think vote, 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 from entertainers to the man or woman on the street. Vote, 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 voting is the way, voting is the way, but what does God Almighty? Have to say and teach us, let's go to Isaiah chapter thirty, and I'm gonna start at verse eight. And it reads, now go write it before them in a table and note it in a book. So the table and the book is the same thing, when it says write it before them, and the table is making reference to pages in a book. And note it in a book, the book is making reference is the Holy Bible. That it may be for the time to come forever and ever. So the scriptures say, is teaching us that God told Isaiah, as he did all the prophets, to write what his words said. In a book, the book we now call the Bible, that it may come for. That it shall be for the time to come forever and ever, verse nine, that this is a rebellious people, lying children. Children that will not hear the law of the Lord, you see what's wrong with our people? We're so rebellious, we don't wanna hear the law of the Lord. You like the fact that we're Israelites, some of you like the thought that we're Christians, but the bottom line. The majority of you hate the law of God. Let's read verse nine again, that this is a rebellious people, lying children, children that will not hear the law of the Lord. Verse ten, which say to the seers, see not, the word seer is prophet. When you read First Samuel nine, verse nine, it tells you that the word seer was an ancient word for prophet. So let's read verse ten again. It says, which say to the seers, see not. And to the prophets, prophesy not unto us right things, speak unto us smooth things, prophesy deceit. So what do y'all wanna hear, you wanna hear lie after lie after lie? You wanna hear the white man's religions is the way, you wanna hear that the white man's politics. His political realm is the way for our people. That's what y'all wanna hear, but that's not the message of the Holy Bible, that's not the message of God Almighty. Verse eleven. Get you out of the way, this is what y'all say to the prophets, the seers, get you out of the way, turn aside, out of the path. Cause the Holy One of Israel to cease from before us. So what, y'all don't wanna hear the Holy One of Israel? You don't wanna hear the Holy One of Israel, the Holy God of Israel, you don't wanna hear what he gotta say, verse twelve. Wherefore thus saith the Holy One of Israel, because you despise this word. And trust in oppression and perverseness and stay there on. What is verse twelve telling us? That our people trust in oppression, believe it or not. Politics, the political realm, democracy, republicanism. Those are philosophies of oppression. That's right, I said it, cause the Bible says it, these are doctrines of oppression, just like Christianity is. A doctrine of oppression, then when it says and perverseness, let's get into the, to the perverseness, for example. What's the perversion in Christianity? Married today, divorced tomorrow? Homosexuality in the church? Oh yeah, run and rap, and just look at your choir directors and choirs, lesbians and homos all up in there. Mm-hmm, just like in your politics, in your political realm, just like in your political realm. Let's continue, Isaiah chapter thirty. Uh, let me see, verse thirteen. Therefore this iniquity shall be to you as a breach, ready to fall, notice it says iniquity. What does iniquity mean? Sin, breaking of God's commandments. Let's read on, swelling out in a high wall, whose breaking comes suddenly at an instant. Y'all see that, you hear what the Bible is saying, do you hear what the Bible is saying? Now, let's go a few chapters over to Isaiah thirty-two. And verse five says, Isaiah thirty-two, verse five. The vile person shall be no more called liberal, you see that? Now, when you think of a liberal. Uh, politician, you think of a Democrat. A liberal politician could be conservative, but generally the first thing that pops in most people's head is a Democrat. Okay? And not that there's a difference between Democrats and Republicans, they're two demons on the same, two demons on the same snake. Two-headed dragon, I don't know how to say it, but y'all know what I'm talking about. Verse five again, for the vile person shall be no more called liberal, nor the churl said to be bountiful. When you look up that word, churl, it means like rude, it's still referring to the liberal person, the Democrat. And, and a liberal person can be in any kind of political, um. Have any kind of political title, okay, but generally, we refer to them as Democrats, verse six. For the vile person will speak villainy, you see that, for the vile person will speak villainy, meaning evil. And his heart will work iniquity, meaning sin, to practice hypocrisy. You ever notice in the political realm, they always promise the black community, we'll do this for you, we'll do that for you. Hell, we'll lower taxes, we'll give you new schools, better, uh, uh, pay grade. It's all a lie, once they enter the office. Look at, hell, look at, uh, Barack Obama, he promised the black community a whole lot of nothing. What did y'all get? Nothing. Nothing honey, you got nothing. Okay, now let's read on. It says, to practice hypocrisy and to utter error against the Lord. Every one of these liberals utters errors against the Lord, they can't stand the Bible. Y'all better stay out of that political realm. To make empty the soul of the hungry, black people are the hungry, our soul is empty. What do we want? Reparations, what do they say? Give them jobs, give them jobs, don't give them reparations, what's that little old man Bernie Sanders? Even him and Hillary Clinton, give them jobs. Give them jobs, don't give them reparations, give them jobs, you can't make this stuff up. We're hungry in this society. And they make our souls empty, let's read that part again. It's said to make empty the soul of the hungry, we want better housing, we get projects. We want better school system, we get terrible school system. That's right, I said it. Christopher Columbus discovered America. Uh, uh, what did it say, uh, uh, have a, uh, a multicultural curriculum. And where's the black man and black woman, always on the bottom. Where's our history start slavery, but is that true? No. We hungry, we hungry, we hungry for truth, and our people never get it. They promised to lower taxes, get us better, better, uh, uh, jobs, nope, nope, nope. But there's always room for drugs, prison, okay, there's always room for that. Police, uh, uh, abuse. There's always room for that, then it reads on, and he will cause the drink of the thirsty to fail, we're thirsty. Our drink always fails, we got our mouth open, we want, we want somebody to quench our thirst, our thirst for what? Our thirst for truth and justice, and we never get it. We never, ever get it. I hope y'all listening, I hope y'all paying very close attention to what I am saying. To what I'm bringing out, okay? Now, where was I at? Verse seven. The instruments also of the churl, meaning the rude, are evil, remember the churl is going back to the liberal person. Their instruments are evil, they get up on that podium and practice hypocrisy, they lie, lie, lie. It says he deviseth wicked devices to destroy the poor with lying words, who's the poor? The Israelites, when you read Isaiah fourteen thirty-two, it proves that the poor of Zion is who the Lord is making reference to. It says, even when the needy speaketh right, even when we telling the truth, we been in captivity for four hundred and twenty-four years. Well, let me put it this way, I want y'all to think, write this down. Or, or Google this, Google this, slavery in Spain. Slavery started for the black man and black, black women, black man and black woman, excuse me. With Spain. What year was it? Fourteen forty-one. When were we emancipated? Eighteen sixty-five, do the math. Fourteen forty-one to eighteen sixty-five. That's four hundred and twenty-four years of chattel slavery. Now chattel slavery is yolks of iron, shackles and chains. Understand what I'm saying, this preceded the black codes, this preceded Jim Crow. Four hundred and twenty-four years of chattel slavery. Nobody could have lived through that, no other race have gone through what we've gone through, yet when our people ask for reparations. Oh hell no, you hear all kinda if ands or buts? Then you wanna, here's what you hear, oh well, we sorry for slavery, sorry don't cut it. Sorry don't cut it, anybody could say they sorry. Y'all got to be kidding me, if a thief truly is sorry to someone for what he stole, what should he do? Give back what he stole. Return what he stole. That's signs, a sign of true repentance. All the white man wanna do is give you lip service, I'm sorry, and y'all wanna, and here you a clapping your hands, shut up, clapping your damn hands. The hell is wrong with y'all? Okay, uh, let's read that again, verse seven, the instruments also of the churl are evil. He deviseth wicked devices to destroy the poor with lying words. Even when the needy speak of the right, even when we speak right, we get lies, 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 verse eight. But the liberal deviseth liberal things, and by liberal things shall he stand, watch this verse nine. Rise up ye women that are at ease, that's right, black women, you at ease in society. Our sister, she in Boston, one of the most racist. One of the most racist places on, in America, and you shocked at what you see? You shocked at what's going on, well, I ain't. Okay, let's read that again, verse nine, rise up ye women that are at ease, hear my voice, you careless daughters. Give ear unto my speech, why does the Lord say that, cause you women turn a deaf ear to the Bible. Yeah, you read John three sixteen, yeah, you look for scriptures on love, but the, the milk, the, no, no, it's the milk. Well, I could say the milk, the meat and potatoes of the scriptures you reject. That's what's wrong with you black women, the Bible talks about marriage, uh, I don't wanna hear nothing about that. Uh, dress modestly, ah, I don't wanna hear nothing about that. What the man takes the lead, eh, I don't wanna hear nothing about that, that's why the Lord gives this message to you black women, you black and Latino women. Rise up ye women that are at ease, hear my voice, you careless daughters, you black and with Latino women. You've been very careless since you got freed from yolks of iron. Very, very careless. Trusted in everything white society says, what the hell is wrong with you? So God says, give ear unto my speech, meaning the Bible, that's what that mean. From there, let's go to Revelation chapter eighteen, verse four. This is about our people, and this is more proof that the children of Israel are captive. And bondage here in Babylon the Great, which you call the United States of America, Revelation eighteen, verse four. And I heard another voice from heaven saying, come out of her, my people. That you be not partakers of her sins, and that you receive not of her plagues. Judgment is coming to the United States of America, brothers and sisters, I know that's not taught to you in church. Your churches will never teach you that for two reasons, A, most of them don't know it, cause they don't know the Bible. Two, they've been paid by this, by this system, not to teach you the truth. Now, when it says come out of her, my people, let's go to a precept, I'm gonna go to Jeremiah fifty-one. And verse six. Okay, verse six reads. Flee out of the midst of Babylon, let me start at verse five. Let me start at verse five, for Israel hath not been forsaken, nor Judah of his God, see the Most High is still with us. He's waiting for us to repent, brothers, he's waiting for us to repent, sisters. It reads on. Uh, of the Lord of hosts, though their land was filled with sin against the Holy One of Israel, now watch this, verse six. Flee out of the midst of Babylon, see, we went from Israel into Bab, the Babylonian captivity. Ancient Babylon, but now we bringing it up to today, cause we read in Revelation eighteen, that's modern day Babylon the Great. The spiritual Babylon the Great, okay, the metaphorical, the allegorical Babylon the Great, which is the United States of America. Verse six, again, flee out of the midst of Babylon and deliver every man his soul. So the point is delivering your soul, this isn't a flea doctrine where you gotta get up and go to, um, Egypt. Or, or Morocco, or Liberia, or South Africa, or Ghana, or Nigeria, no, 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 no. Cause America's reach is long. America's reach is long, now watch this, I want y'all to understand what it's talking about, a spiritual separating yourself from the sins of Babylon. Separating from their religions, their politics, things of that nature, verse six, flee out of the midst of Babylon. And deliver every man his soul, be not cut off in her iniquity. For this is the time of the Lord's vengeance, he will render unto her a recompense. Now let's jump over from there to verse, um, forty-five. Jeremiah fifty-one, verse forty-five, my people, go ye out of the midst of her. And deliver ye every man his soul from the fierce anger of the Lord. This is a spiritual revolution, this is a, a spiritual revolution, deliver your soul, deliver your soul. Learn that you're the Israelites and keep God's commandments. I hope y'all understand that, I really do, from there. I wanna go over to Second Corinthians. Second Corinthians, bear with me. You know, ever notice, you ever notice, and I'm not saying all, but I'm saying there are many. Black politicians married to Caucasians, I'm gonna say it again, there are many black politicians, and Latino. Latina, married to Caucasians, now from what I'm hearing, I hear that that boosts your credibility. That boosts white folks trusting you more. There's an expression, show me who you married to, and I'll show you who your allegiance is to. Y'all, y'all get that, y'all understand that, but watch what the Bible says, Second Corinthians six, verse seventeen. Wherefore come out from among them, and be ye separate, saith the Lord. And touch not the unclean thing, and I will receive you, what's the unclean thing? Their religions, their religious policies, their political policies, listen brothers, listen sisters. Verse eighteen, and I will be a father unto you, and you shall be my sons and daughters. "And I will be a father unto you, and you shall be my sons and daughters, saith the Lord Almighty." Judgment is coming, brothers. Judgment is coming, sisters. I can't say it enough. I can't stress it enough. I pray that y'all listening, I really, really do. It seems like y'all turn a deaf ear to that thing. Now, let's take, for example, our sister Ilhan Omar. Everybody was excited when she, um, became a member of Congress. Okay? Now, Ilhan Omar, she is Somali. Ilhan Omar, she kicked her black husband to the curb. Listen good to what I'm saying. Ilhan Omar kicked her black husband to the curb to have an affair with a white man. Did y'all hear what I said? To have an affair with a white man. Her Somali community booed the hell out of her at a concert.
The first Somali-American elected to Congress, squad member Ilhan Omar, getting a not-so-warm welcome at a Somali music festival in her home state.
And she's wondering why, why? You had a beautiful relationship with your black husband, but he wasn't good enough. So what'd you do? You kicked him to the curb and you got with the white man, okay? She ain't the only one. Look at our other sister Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. She's engaged to a white man too. I guess that helps push their career. You can't make this stuff up. You can't make this stuff up. You better come out of the politics. Come out. From there, let's go to Second Thessalonians, chapter one, verse six. And it reads, "Seeing it is a righteous thing with God to recompense tribulation to them that trouble you." Now, you, you may ask yourself, well, who troubles me? Who troubles us? You looking around at your brother next door. You looking around at your sister across the street. No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Watch this. Let's go to Luke, chapter one. Let me just go and help you out a little bit. Luke, chapter one and verse, uh, seventy-one. "That we should be saved from our enemies and from the hand of all that hate us." This is talking about white folks. They're the ones who hate us. They're the enemies the Bible is teaching us about. They're the ones that enslaved us. Friends don't enslave friends. Okay? But you're so quick to wanna point the finger at your black brother or black sister, Latin brother, Latin sister. It's talking about the white man, first and foremost, followed by the Arabs. Okay, there's a whole list of the enemies of God in Psalms the eighty-third chapter. Start at verse one and read down. "I lie not." But right now, I'm just getting to the nitty gritty of thing. Luke one seventy-one. "That we..." We who? "We Israelites should be saved from our enemies." Who's our enemies? Those that put us in slavery for four hundred and twenty-four years. After that, after emancipation, what'd they do? They enforced, uh, black codes on us. After that, they formed Jim Crow laws. After that came the Ku Klux Klan. You can't make this stuff up. Verse seventy-one again. "That we should be saved from our enemies and from the hand of all that hate us." I hope y'all understand that. Now, while, well, listen, good, I'm not finished with our sister, uh, 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 Tanya Anderson, Tanya F. Anderson. She shocked, banged the table about what's going on over there in Boston. Well, if you just check out a little bit of history, y'all remember Bill Russell? He was the, uh, uh, basketball player who played as a center for the Boston Celtics on NBA from nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty-nine. He was a five-time NBA Most Valuable Player and a twelve-time NBA Play All-Star. He was the centerpiece of the Celtics dynasty that won eleven. Heard what I said? Eleven NBA championships during his thirteen-year career. They gave Bill Russell hell. Hell, he didn't even wanna retire his jersey in Boston, cause they were so racist. And you know a Boston players, they, Boston people, "Oh, it's not us, it's not us." Oh, cut it, stop it. Even LeBron James said that Boston was racist as hell. Take a look, take a listen.
LeBron James returning to the Drew League overnight and scoring forty-two points in highlight after highlight, but it's his off-court comments making headlines this morning. It's one of the most iconic rivalries in all of sports, the Boston Celtics and the Los Angeles Lakers. The team combining for thirty-four NBA titles. But this morning, it's Boston fans crying foul over comments made by LeBron James in the latest episode of his show, The Shop.
In basketball, their fans, that you go play away that they can literally take the game from you?
I mean, Boston.
Boston, yeah.
Why do you, why do you hate Boston?
Cause they racist. That's why.
In a candid conversation, James and other notable figures discussed how fans and sportsmanship can shape their experiences. James citing taunts and an incident ten years ago in which a fan poured beer on top of his head.
They might throw something on you. I mean, I got a beer thrown on me leaving the game.
Boston residents reacting to James's latest claims.
I hate that he said Boston fans are racist when, you know, seventy-five, seventy-five percent of us are not.
They always have something against us.
I don't know another town that says whatever we want like Boston. Boston says whatever they want.
James, who last year became a part-owner of the Red Sox, also alleging some Boston fans were T-shirts with expletives next to his initials. A Celtic spokesperson told the Boston Globe, "The team does not sell any merchandise that disparages James or any other opposing player. They have not responded to James's other comments about racism among the fans."
LeBron James, it seems to me, was, was talking about his own personal experiences, which have value and which are important and which are believable.
He's not the first NBA player to allege racism among the city's sports fans. Last year, ex-Celtic Kyrie Irving called out subtle racism after a series of his own run-ins with Boston fans. Celtic star Jalen Brown responding to Irving's comments, saying, "That's not a fair judgment."
I've kinda seen, uh, the things floating around with Boston and the topic of racism. I think by painting every Celtic fan as a, as a racist would be unfair.
The behavior of some Celtics fans were on full display earlier this summer when the Golden State Warriors complained during the NBA Finals.
We've played in front of rude people before, dropping F-bombs with children in the crowd. Real classy. Good job, Boston.
And we have reached out to LeBron and the Celtics for comment, but they have not responded.
And you know what? They all, what the news does, listen, Crafty Council, real quick. When black people call out the evil of white society, you know what reporters do? They look for the first ignorant black man or first ignorant black woman who's going, who wants to assimilate and, and hopes they say the same stupid things. That's what they say. Oh, it's not all Boston that's racist. It's not all, brother, shut the hell up. He wasn't talking about black folks. And you know that, and I know that. He was talking about white folks. So do us all a favor and shut the hell up. Make everybody sick. The hell is this? And you white reporters, you, y'all good at your job, cause you go around looking for the first dumb negro. Oh, this one right here, oh, yeah, he gonna say something stupid. You best to believe it. He ain't gonna know what LeBron, uh, meant by that. Or he gonna make believe he don't and say something stupid so that white people just love him. Let's go on back to Second Thessalonians, chapter one, verse six. It reads, "Seeing it is a righteous thing with God to recompense." That word, "recompense" means to pay back. Tribulation to them that trouble you. So, white folks, your day is coming. Judgment and justice is coming to you. You've never seen, uh, 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 judgment like it's gonna come on y'all. Black man, black woman, justice is coming. Justice is, see, Christianity don't wanna teach y'all this. Verse seven. "And to you who are troubled, rest with us." What does that part mean? You brothers and sisters that know you be in trouble by, by white society? You brothers and sisters, uh, like LeBron James? Like, uh, Tanya F. Anderson? You know you troubled. You know you catching hell with these white folks. You better come into this truth as an Israelite. Come into this truth. Repent of your sins as Israel. That's what it means in verse seven. "And to you who are troubled, rest with us, when the Lord Jesus shall be revealed from heaven with his mighty angels." See, Christ is coming. That's right, the black Messiah. The King of Kings, Lord of Lords, is coming with his black angels, with the so-called, what America call them? UFOs. Watch this verse eight. "In flaming fire, taking vengeance on them that know not God." See, you white folks, you don't know God. You don't know the Lord in your false churches and your false synagogues. You don't know the Lord. Let's read verse eight again. I like that one. "In flaming fire, taking vengeance on them that know not God and that obey not the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ." Verse nine. "Who shall be punished with everlasting destruction from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power." And black man, black woman, whichever one of y'all, you can't repent of your sins. You can't come out of their, these white supremacist religions, these white supremacist political groups. You gonna pay right along with your slave master. You gonna pay, you gonna pay, judgment's gonna hit you too. Don't think you gonna escape, cause you're not. Okay? Let's read that again, verse nine. "Who shall be punished with everlasting destruction from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power." Y'all see that? I hope y'all see that. So, I'm going in that then. Brothers and sisters, I, I pray that you gleaned something from this short lesson. I pray you do. I pray you did. Write down, take notes, brothers and sisters. Take notes, rewind. See, y'all have, you have a, you have, what is it called? You got an advantage, whereas I did not. When I came in the truth back in nineteen ninety, there was no internet that, that was like it is today. There was no internet like it is today, where you could rewind, no YouTube, none of that. We had to physically go to class and take notes. And if you went to class and unfortunately didn't know how to take good notes, oh, well, you just missed out. You just missed out. Okay? So, y'all have an advantage, whereas when I came in this truth, I didn't have it. So, take your notes, rewind, play it again over and over and over. Cause you learn through repetition. You learn through repetition. Oh, and if I forgot to say it, Christmas is a white supremacist holiday and is of the devil. You can read that in Jeremiah ten, verse one through five. And look at many of the videos we got on Christmas being a, 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 a sacrilege of a holiday. It's evil. All right? So now, let's get to the reading of the shout-out letters and donations, all right?
Water soldiers, a couple days later, was the shortest day of the year. And the pagans had something called Saturnalia. And it was a time of lawlessness because all the laws were suspended. And people, a bunch of singers were actually watered the streets naked singing. And, and then they had orgies. All this business about mistletoe, pagan, Christmas trees, pagan, giving out gifts, pagan, every bit of it, isn't it?
The moles that they captured, they forced to become Christians. This is why the ones they captured, they became the slaves of the white Christians. They forced them to become Christians and became the servants or slaves of the Caucasians.
And they that dwell upon the earth shall rejoice over them and make merry.
Merry Christmas is about the conquering of the blacks, the Israelites. That's what it's about. Read it again.
And they that dwell upon the earth shall rejoice over them and make merry and shall send gifts one to another.
At one time, the gifts was you and I. We were the gifts they gave one to another. Today is chocolate and candy and transformer toys. They just changed it. That's all he did. But the whole celebration was about us being conquered. The proof is in Holland. Cause some of us get so ignorant, know it's about elves. Ain't about no damn elves. They changed that to keep us asleep. The whole celebration is our destruction.
All right, let's get to the reading of the shout-out letters and donations. This first letter reads, "Grace and peace to you, Bishop Nathaniel. I watch the classes every Sabbath, so good." And side note, I know a lot of you say you watch the classes, but what would be good if you definitely take notes? Like I see here, the sister writes, "I be trying to keep up writing the scriptures down." Well, that's good. And you know, uh, once it's up, you can slow it down, pause it, I mean, rewind. That would be best, because a lot, a lot of times I hear brothers and sisters say they watch the classes and some of them do some of the most evil things you could imagine. And I'm like, I thought you watch all the classes? So now, I hope everybody understands what I'm saying. So let me get back to the letter. All right, "Grace and peace to you, Bishop Nathaniel. I watch the classes every Sabbath, so good. I be trying to keep up writing the scriptures down." All praises, "I love the classes." Bishop Nathaniel, it was a class when you speaking about the sisters leaving inappropriate things out. It was not good. I believe that it should be the sisters of IUIC talking to the sister. I say that with love. You hard on sisters sometime. Yes, I am very hard on sisters. Y'all remember Eve, right? Don't forget our foremother Eve, all right? Bishop Nathaniel, I love you with the love of Christ. Smile, Sister Audrey. Well, I do thank you, Sister Audrey, and I appreciate that. I do not take offense. I thank you so, so much. It's good to hear, con, con, what's the word? Uh, conduct, is it conductive criticism? Constructive, I'm sorry, I'm black. Y'all, excuse me. All right, the next letter reads, "Sloan Bishop, uh, in leadership is your sister, the Jersey Jew. Please my support to our brothers so they continue the mission all over where our family is. Just know not to say my government name. Uh, prayers for me as a supporter. I send much peace, love and blessings to all twelve tribes. I watch all the classes and so happy I understand which time we are in with love. Most High and Christ bless." This is from the Jersey Jew. Thank you, sis, I appreciate you. Thank you so much. This next letter reads, "Dear Bishop, all praises to the Most High God. Hope you and your family are doing well. God bless each and every one of you and my family at Israel United in Christ. Love you, Bishop, your sister in Christ, Mary G." Oh, I did wanna say this. Thank you, Mary G. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I did see a video, a sister forwarded to me. Um, shout out to you, sis, you know who you are. Anyway, it was a, another sister doing a video saying that IUIC is very hard on the sisters. And I do, I, I do have to agree with that and it's very, very necessary. Um, this, remember, the sisters teach the children. And from what I've seen, being thirty years in the truth, I've seen sisters get angry with their husbands or with the congregation and teach their children an evil lesson against both their husband and against the IUIC and against Christ. I've seen it happen. I've been in this truth, it's actually been over thirty years. So, I'm very hard on the sisters, and that doesn't mean I'm not hard on the men. I deal with the men because I can sit with the men amongst the men and say things that I'm not allowed to say to sisters because of the cancel. Uh, what is it called? Cancel, what is this thing called? They'll cancel you, you know? Y'all know what I'm talking about. Anyway, I go on. The next letter reads, "Sloan, my dear Bishop, Leader and Brother, I greet you in the name of the Almighty, the great I am, who is above all, as we see Edom's wickedness, their increasing arrogance and audacious pomposity." Wow, "of which I'm not surprised. It baffles me how they refuse to accept the evident traject- trajectory." Wow, "of their prophetic demise and the imminent return of the Most High. You may not know me by face, but I pray and fast for the nation." All praises. "You and leadership and myself. It is difficult when my grown children are remaining, let me see, and remaining parent and relatives aren't awakening. Dearest prophet, as we witness the normalization of sin and loathing of God's laws, our efforts must increase. The time of Amalek fooling themselves is coming to an end." You got that right. "As the mirror of the word is put in front of their faces. I pray for God's forgiveness and mercy on us all. Thank you. I pray for his daily bread to keep us endured to the end." to keep us endured to the end. All praises to the Most High. Please use these arms for the movement towards the kingdom. Come. Shalom, always your Levitical brother, Pierre David F., aka David Bet." Okay, David. All praises. "Please pray for my health. As doctors, I recommend another surgery." Yes, sir. I'll definitely... I see you left your phone number there also. Brothers, sisters, um, always remember this. I do want to say this. Remember to pray for the nation. And remember, we are in dire times as you see, um, our name and fame, if you can call it that, is being pushed worldwide. As you saw with the Barclays Center, the ADL, the SPLC are trying to come down to shut down IUIC as well as some of the other Israelite camps. So we definitely do need your prayers, first and foremost, followed by your donations. Um, we definitely going to need lawyers. So if you know any libel lawyers, any defamation lawyers, please get them in touch with us. Um, preferably, um, if they're good, bring them. But I would like our own people, if they have an empathy towards our movement, our plight. Um, I've seen with many of the so-called Jewish lawyers, when they know it's us, they raise the price exponentially. Uh, and many of them turn us down. So, we need all the help we can get. All right. The next letter reads, "Shalom from Mordecai in Joy. We like to thank the bishops, deacons, captains, soldiers, officers for bringing out this truth of the Bible of who we are. Thank you. Putting up work in. Shalom." Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. The next letter reads, "Shalom, Most High in Christ blessed. Uh, please use this wherever is needed. Please keep me in your prayers as I continue to keep all of you at IUIC and Israel in minds. May God bless you abundantly, who gather faith for our treasure." Uh, this is... You call... You call Ben? Okay. All praises, all praises. The next letter is from Brother Paul of the tribe of Benjamin. All praises. "Shalom, Bishop, Most High in Christ blessed. Hope all is well with you and your family. I have visited the school in Detroit and visit... I have to stop because family members sick in the home. I'm okay. Thank the Lord. But I stay away from others anyway. Uh, shout out to Biblical Smoke and all the teachers. Anyway, it has been a well, a will. These are my monthly free will offerings to the Booster Club. Thank you again, Bishop, for the knowledge that God in Christ lay on you, bishops. Shalom, Most High in Christ blessed. All praises. Thank you, Brother Paul. Thank you, thank you, thank you." This next letter reads, "Dear Bishop Nathaniel, uh, shalom, sir. Most High in Christ blessed. I pray for you, your household, all leadership of Israel United in Christ. Use the arms wherever they are needed to help this truth spread to the four corners of the earth. The Most High is turning this world right side up while simultaneously revealing the man of sin, which is the U-ish man, biblically known as Amalek. That's right, the devil the Bible speaks of, the synagogue of Satan. Bishop, last Sabbath, my family and I took the initiative to travel to the IUIC camp in Columbia, South Carolina, to congregate for the first time after watching online for two years. The hospitality was amazing. It was like being around family members you've known all your life. Also to see the officers at the leadership table and to be in the same building as the prophets I teach, I see teach on the streets, on YouTube is very exciting. All praises to the Most High Bishop. Shalom, Most High in Christ blessed. Sincerely, Josiah." All praises. Thank you, Josiah. All praises. Age 15. This next letter reads, "Most High in Christ blessed. Here is a token of appreciation to all the leadership. Uh, all praises to the Most High. Love, Oglesby." The Oglesby's. Thank you so much. This next one reads, "Shalom, Bishop. In leadership, again, the Jersey Jew sends arms to our brothers. Continue our mission to gather the elect of Israel. Always keep me in... Always keep me in secret so I be blessed to continue to send arms to help. Please just pray for me so my health stays well. I send much love, peace to you all. Most High in Christ blessed." All right. The next one, right, reads, "To the prophets, I have been looking for a class closer to me, but so far I haven't found nothing that is close enough so I can drive. I need you all to pray for my health to get better. Yes. I'll be able to get a part-time job. I'll send you something to help get the word, the word of God around the world to our sisters and brothers in Christ. Amen, Sister Barbara." Please let me know that this got... Yes, it got to our hands. Thank you, thank you, thank you.